Proclamation. There's no, nope. It's a little surprise. A little surprise, not a proclamation. A little surprise I'll share with you all I've got in the mail. Okay, what am I doing? What am I looking for? Where is the meeting stuff? What do you, what do you, what do you, Terry, so now?
Decorations.
The last thing I have is week ending eleven one, but where's the meeting stuff? I'm having a problem finding Terry's here. You know what, I could just go on the Google Drive. Thirteenth. Right, got it. November thirteenth, November thirteenth.
Oh, it is November thirteenth. It was sent out November twelfth.
So I have that, I have that, okay. All right. Is everybody else ready now that I finally? Mr. Russo, you're good?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Welcome everyone to the Newton Town Council Meeting of November thirteenth, twenty nineteen. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Reed, can you take the role, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Schlafer?
Here.
Mayor LaFois?
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January fourth, twenty nineteen. All right. In your materials, you receive the October twenty eighth minutes, both for the regular meeting and the executive session. Any additional comments, deletions, changes, amendments?
There were two minor corrections which have been taken care of.
Any additional conversation? Okay, can I have a motion for both of those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty eighth for both the regular and the executive session.
And I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilman Schlafer to approve the minutes of both regular and executive of October twenty eighth. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the Town Council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic and to help facilitate an early meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council members may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Any comments from the public at this time?
Maureen Snellin, Plainfield Avenue. I just wanted to comment that the flag's out in front, looked beautiful. I was unable to make it to the ceremony, but it really looks nice. And secondly, at the end of the last meeting, you know, many people spoke about the town manager's contract coming to an end at the end of December, and one of the council members commented that it didn't seem to bother the public of what the superintendent makes and also that he lives out of state. It, yes, indeed bothers the public. I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Okay, we'll move on to council manager reports. I have quite a few things today, exciting things, so bear with me. On October thirty first, Councilwoman Dixon and Councilwoman Diglio and I, along with Lorraine and Tom and many others from REC, certainly the Newton Fire Department as a sponsor and the Newton Moose Lodge, were at the Halloween Parade and then the subsequent events with trunk or treats. And I know that some were concerned about the touch and go weather over the course of that day and the day before, but as it happened, the weather broke for the hours to really provide for the activities, the parade and trick or treating. So it was so nice to see so many families out, so many creative costumes. It's an event certainly that residents look forward to every year. So again, thank you to the Newton Police Department, our Newton Fire Department and the Moose Lodge for sponsoring, but also to the Newton Police Department, the EMTs, first responders, everyone else and the rest of the staff, Tom, for everybody coming in and helping out to make sure it was a safe event, first and foremost. That's always the first priority is safety. But I thought it was a great night and the kids in particular looked fantastic. On November second, Councilwoman Diglio and I had the honor of attending the Boy Scouts Court of Honor for our own Brendan Reed. It's always lovely to recognize when we have new Eagle Scouts in the community and Brendan in particular, as the son of our town clerk, has been active as a volunteer in the town with his Boy Scout troop, for his church, for his school and his community for many, many years before he was even on the road to achieving the distinct honor of having his Eagle Scout. So I know Officer Kus is here as well. He has Eagle Scout sons and it was wonderful to also see so many Newton and Newton area residents who are Eagle Scouts, you know, when they do the roll call and there were men that stood up and said, you know, they got their Eagle badge on July twenty first of nineteen seventy nine for it. It's amazing how many people in the town of Newton are so giving of themselves in terms of public service and continue to give back to formulating the future leaders within Boy Scouts. So thank you for the opportunity to be there. Sandy and I were proud to represent the council and give Brendan his proclamation, so thank you. On November seventh, I had the opportunity to attend the Karen and Quinnlin Holiday Elegance Event up at the Fairgrounds. It was nice to be able to touch bases with, it's always nice to touch bases with the nonprofits that are in the town, but certainly Karen Ann Quinnlin is known well beyond the borders of Newton and Sussex County, was really a leader on the forefront in the conversation of hospice back when their daughter Karen was in need of those services. And just wanted to say that Julia Quinnlin is coming out with a book. It's coming out very soon about the whole story behind all of that. So it was nice to be able to go out and support them and their, you know, their wonderful neighbor right here in Newton. The next day, I had such a fun time at the Newton Theater Casino Night. Maureen Snellin was there with me. We were, she was the good luck at the table, the blackjack table for sure. It was definitely a fun night. And it was great as the inaugural event, the fundraising event for the theater. I thought it was a really great turnout. But above and beyond that, they had members of the children's theater perform. Amazing, right? Right, Maureen? Like, I just now want to go to every single play that they're putting on, the children's theater, and really the talent was coming from all over the county, Vernon, Franklin.
Even out of county.
Out of county as well. And they were singing like a cappella, like they were, I mean, actors, great voices, animated, you know, I'm in professional fundraising, but that's what you do at a fundraiser. Like, you bring out what's going to speak to the mission. And I think the fundraising took off from there, right, Maureen? There were people that were spending money like left and right. I got the opportunity to talk with JP for a while, so it was great to touch bases with him. He's super excited about everything that's going on in Newton in terms of the developers. And, you know, it's interesting because I spent a lot of time with JP at the end of the night. I think I was, I actually enabled him to not have to clean up too much because we talked for a while. But it is really amazing how the developers and investors and people that have really kind of turned properties around all do talk to each other. And there's great, this great symbiotic kind of relationship going on right now and lots of excitement. So it was, it was great, again, to spend some time with, with the folks from the theater. But it was also great, and Maureen can attest to this as well, but there were so many people from outside of Newton that were there. And so we were able to kind of talk to folks and, you know, I usually lead with, you know, when they say that they're not from Newton, you know, what brings you here? I mean, obviously they're for the fundraiser, but I always say, you know, what do you think of Newton? And I don't always say who I am when I ask that question, but it was-
I didn't know who she was at all for the day after night.
Yeah, and then it came out, right? But organically, people are like, oh, we love coming here, we love coming to the theater, we wish there were twenty-five restaurants on Spring Street, like, we love walking on the street, we like looking in the shop windows, wish all the shops were open all the time, you know, is some of the feedback that I heard. But, I mean, really people, you know, this is a gem in our town. So it was great to be there, to hear that feedback. Many people who come to Newton or know about what's going on in Newton because of the theater. So when we talk about that vision of living, working and playing in the town of Newton, it's those types of activities where we kind of see that, really, that come to fruition. And then, of course, the next day on Saturday was an amazing Flags of Honor event. And Maureen, I agree with you, just the presentation of the flags up front, you know, the New Jersey Herald and Tap Into did great coverage of the event. There are videos around, lots of pictures. So Tom, I want to thank you for bringing that idea from Bernard's Township up here. Certainly, Community of Hope, who was the beneficiary of all of the monies donated in honor of the flags, was super appreciative. I had the opportunity to speak with their executive director Carmine Dio a couple of days before the event. He was super excited to come up to Newton. It was great to have many members of the VFW and Legion and so many veterans there. And, you know, it was a personally moving event for so many people and, you know, the roster of veterans that people made donations for that have a flag and their name out there were so super appreciative. And again, people coming from out of county that were just excited that Newton was doing this and was hopeful that this was going to grow over a year and that more municipalities were going to do it. We did receive a certificate from Congressman Josh Gottheimer's office. I'm going to turn this over to Tom tonight. But it says, "This is a congressional certificate of recognition presented to the town of Newton on the occasion of the Flags of Honor Ceremony. Congratulations on this momentous occasion. Your commitment to honoring those who have served our country is exemplary. I commend your dedication to community service and to leadership." And, you know, we had a beautiful luncheon. Michelle Estramera, so many people as part of Community Development Recreation did such a great job converting this room into red, white and blue. There was so much patriotism, our police department, our fire department. Thank you, Chief, for bringing the truck and putting the big flag up. The signage was great. It was a cold day, but there was so much warmth, I think, in terms of support for our veterans. So I hope that that continues year after year for sure. So a couple of things, just coming up over the next couple of days. Tomorrow afternoon here, I'm sure Tom or Sandy will also mention this, we have the Greater Newton Chamber of Commerce Meet and Greet. That's open. We're looking forward to having lots of folks here to just talk about what goes on in Town Hall, what goes on on the day-to-day business side, what the exciting new things are that are happening around town. So an opportunity to kind of meet with some business owners and residents and others to talk about what's going on in town. Also tomorrow night, many of us are going to be attending the Sussex County Community College Funding Their Future Event. This is their single biggest fundraiser on an annual basis that raises money for scholarships, so we're looking forward to that. On Friday at one o'clock, I believe, I have the honor of hosting Governor Cody here at Town Hall, who will be presenting the town with the stigma-free signs as a result. Councilman Dixon, thank you for bringing that forward. We passed a proclamation. This is something that's very, a very important initiative to Governor Cody around the conversation on, of mental health and the stigmas associated with those seeking services. And so he personally wants to deliver those signs to the municipalities that embrace the program. And so he'll be here on Friday. Saturday night, Newton Medical Center is hosting their annual Festival of Lights. So I know the police department, the fire department are going to be involved because there's a big fireworks display. But again, that's an open public event. They light up all the trees, all the trees and all the lights and all the wreaths that you see lining the hospital parking lots and the driveways leading up to that. Those all have been donated in honor and/or memory of loved ones and folks and people. So again, and it just speaks to, and those lights stay on throughout the season and it just kind of speaks to the generosity of the community and donors in our area that support so many different organizations. That's Saturday night. You know, on the one side in government, we talk about the fact that Newton as the county seat has so many nonprofits, human services, social services organizations, and what that kind of impact has on our ratables. But at the same time, understanding that the important role that our nonprofits, community partners, the college, the hospital, county government and others play in providing additional services for our residents is also critically important. So it's nice to be able to go out to those events. I also received, you may recall, Tom said that we applied for, we applied for an Innovation and Governance Award through the New Jersey State League of Municipalities. A couple of us will be going down to the League of Municipalities Conference next week. But it was exciting, Tom, that we got this recognition in the mail. This certificate is from the New Jersey State League of Municipalities. It says, "Twenty nineteen Innovation and Governance Awards Presented by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs and New Jersey State League of Municipalities in recognition of our project, our marketing checklist, as it relates to the special events that we have in town, all of those services that play a part whenever we have a special event and the impact of that, that the town of Newton has received honorable mention from the state with regards to that innovative project." So Tom, I pass that on to you as well. Just looking to see if there's anything else. I feel like there was something else, but maybe I'll bring it back in a second. I think that's all I have for now. Deputy Mayor Flynn?
I was not able to make it on Saturday, but Tom sent me some videos. I had some family obligations. But the Flags of Honor, I was, I was fortunate enough to be able to donate a flag in the honor of my grandfather and it was an amazing ceremony and I'm glad that the, I'm glad that the town did it and got the recognition that it should have and it was a community success. And thank you for the very thorough summary, Mayor.
Okay, Councilwoman Diglio?
Okay, on October thirtieth, I did attend Doran Babcock's retirement party, which was very lovely and a very nice send-off to someone who has spent so much time in the town. As Helen had mentioned, we were at the Halloween Parade. We attended the Eagle Scout Ceremony. And on November twelfth, Helen asked me if I could please attend a ribbon cutting for the rededication of forty-nine High Street. What I didn't know until I got there was that they had the original New Jersey Herald newspaper article where my husband Phil cut the ribbon twenty-four years ago when they opened the business for the very first time. So it was kind of moving for me to go round circle with that. So it was interesting that they had that article from twenty-four years ago. And when we took the photo, we actually staged it just as it was staged back then.
That's special.
So it was interesting. And I would have liked to have been here on Saturday. I did have a flag in honor of my brother who served in Vietnam, not once but twice, in Da Nang. He was in the Strategic Air Command. And unfortunately, Mother Nature had me snowbaked in Vermont, where I had been a whole week babysitting my children and I had seven inches of snow on my car. But I would have loved to have been here and the only comment my son had made was, "Mom, me and Philip were veterans. You didn't put flags out for us." So come next year, I guess I'll be doing three flags in honor of my brother and my two sons.
Look, we're grown already.
Yeah, we're grown already.
Councilwoman Schlafer?
Last night, we had an EDC meeting and Helen touched on it a little bit, but with over a dozen major projects going on in town, the momentum here for the revitalization is really, really picking up steam. And I think all the community events have been showing that lately, too. Everything that we've been putting on this year so far has been incredible. And I hope everyone's looking forward to the Holiday Parade, which is Saturday, November thirtieth. It's also Small Business Saturday. So it's a great day to get some gift shopping done and while getting into the holiday spirit. Shortly after that, on Friday, December sixth, we'll have the Town Hall Tree Lighting at five-thirty. And we have a pretty amazing thirty-foot tall tree donated by a county resident coming in. So it'll be an impressive event this year. Other than that, that's all for me.
All right, Councilman Dixon?
On October twenty-ninth, myself and Councilwoman Diglio attended a meeting of municipal representatives with Senator Orho and Assemblyman Space and Wirths. Just a chance to be provided with some updates and ask any questions anybody had. I wanted to thank all the participants who participated in both the costume parade and trunk decorating for the trunk or treat. Saw some really creative costumes and trunks. Thank you to Newton Fire Department and the Moose Lodge for their support in this event and to Kimberly Williams for all she does to make these events possible. Flags of Honor was a great tribute to our veterans. I wanted to thank the REC Committee for their work and organizing it and Tom for bringing the idea to Newton. I hope it continues to grow. Last night, I attended a Board of Ed meeting. They swore in a new representative from Andover, who will be attending the board meetings as the district representative. Dr. Green gave several updates, including that the Walk the Watershed Program is receiving more grant money and will begin several new projects at the various campuses in the spring. Security updates were given and all the doors are going to be locked in the morning until it's time for the students to enter, and that's at Miriam and Halsted. The high school, they are going to go from nine points of entry to four, with all four being monitored during those times. The security glass at Newton High School is going to be installed over the winter break. Probably the big thing was the board had a discussion on consolidation and regionalization, which was brought on by the Tri-District Consortium. Several concerns were brought up. Each district has a different district factor group rating, which represents an approximate measure of a community socioeconomic status. It's all from the census data. The concern is that it could directly affect our ability to qualify for programs like the preschool expansion, breakfast after bell, C to C. Other concerns that were discussed were that the highest salary guide and benefits would prevail and that debt among all three districts would be combined. So a district with less debt potentially would increase their debt. The overall consensus would be that there was winners and losers. They talked about how Byram, Stanhope and Netcon were in the process of studying it for Lenape. And I guess one of the districts, when they, when they realized that they would, going to end up being kind of the losing end, kind of stopped progress on that.
Is that Netcon?
Yeah. I wasn't going to name names. The board concluded that the TDC, the Tri-District Consortium, is going to focus on how the three districts could continue to explore shared service options, professional development and curriculum. A public meeting for the TDC is being planned for May of 2020. When I have more information on that, I will pass that along. And obviously this week, the news about Chief Richards came out, so I just wanted to be, I know we're going to probably bring it up many times between now and his actual retirement date, but I want to thank him for his years of dedicated service to the department, all the work that he's done with the department and Clear have made a profound impact on the community. His leadership and professionalism, we greatly miss, and I wish him the best in all his endeavors going forward.
Yep, so before we go to Tom, to, I wanted to make mention of Chief Richards' retirement. I know that the press release went out yesterday. I know that we will have the opportunity to have him at a meeting and say proper goodbyes to him, but, you know, certainly this puts lots of things in motion in terms of the civil service process and the next steps and what we need to do around, you know, succession planning. Not that there haven't been those discussions. We have a very deep well in the police department with lots of, of our officers having lots of certification and training. Chief Richards is collaborative and open in his management style, so there's a lot of knowledge that already exists there. But I know that Tom has already started the process and has been having meetings almost back-to-back over the last couple of days since the announcement. Chief Richards is certainly a leader and an asset to the town. And we've talked often about the amazing credentials of not only Chief Richards, but the entire department. And so we'll talk more about that over the next coming weeks. Tom will update us on the plans around his departure and what will be going on. But yes, of course, we would be absolutely remiss if we didn't mention that. You know, the town of Newton Police Department is, dare I say, one of the most highly regarded police forces in the county, if not in northern New Jersey, for lots of different reasons. From community policing efforts to the Clear efforts to so many. So that, those will be big shoes to fill, but I'm fully confident that we have a number of people that are fully capable to be able to do that. And then, Tom, I know you'll probably talk about this as well, but I want to recognize, and you can go into the details, but I want to thank you and recognize the contribution that Thor Labs committed this week because I know that's been directly as a result of your efforts. So we'll turn it over to you at this point.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to echo sentiments about the Halloween Parade. It was a lot of fun in spite of the weather, great turnout, a lot of happy faces. So that was, that was great. Appreciate everybody's efforts, all the volunteers, staff, police and fire, EMS, council. It was a lot of fun. Flags of Honor, I appreciate the kudos, but, you know, nice when you're able to do something for veterans. I mean, they, the veterans that came to the ceremony were overly appreciative, you know, and considering what they've done and what they've sacrificed, the fact that we had a ceremony and lunch, it was like the least, thank you, it was like the least we could do, but they were really beside themselves that they were so pleased with it. And, you know, I was honored to be able to lead something like that. So I appreciate, you know, Michelle, Cherie, Kat, rec commission, council, you know, police, fire, like everybody chipped in. The display came out great, the signage, the lapel pin, you know, like it really, and, you know, I credit Michelle with the logistics. She really outdid herself with everything. It really, it was an honor. So I appreciate the kind words, but kudos to the veterans. Some staffing changes. Michelle, the aforementioned Estramera, will no longer be the REC supervisor starting on Monday. She will become the Deputy Municipal Court Administrator. So we're happy for Michelle that she's moving on with her career endeavors and will stay in the organization, but she will become the full-time Deputy Municipal Court Administrator on Monday. So the REC supervisor position has been advertised, if you know of anybody interested. You know, it's a pivotal time for recreation with the pool, Babe Ruth Field. So if somebody who's got good organizational skills, time management and, you know, can handle the ups and downs of the REC and pool items, you know, would be great. So, you know, I'll be interviewing for the position if anybody's interested. Obviously, there are two retirements, not just Chief Richards, but Lieutenant Zappa. A little surprised when I walked in to my office this week and that started my day, but-
Yesterday was interesting.
But we adapt, right? Blessed be the flexible because they won't be bent out of shape, as they say. You know, I'm happy for the chief, as I told him when we met. He's been blessed with a wonderful career here. He's been a great leader, very progressive, small P in his thinking and, you know, very forward-thinking, very innovative with the Clear program and just generally, you know, great guy. So I'm happy for him that he's going to something that he has a family connection to that's point-eight miles from his home. He actually said today that he has to go further out of his way to get gas than to go to his new job. It's interesting. I didn't think of it that way.
It's amazing. Chief Richards is going to go work for the Richards Building.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm happy for Mike and he'll start his terminal leave sometime, most likely early to mid-December. At that point, I'll name an acting chief. Lieutenant Zappa has a great career here as well, leaving, you know, to take care of some things on his end, but we wish Mark well. He will be here through February first. He's not taking any of the terminal leave at the time. So he'll be here through February first. Mike will be gone in December. I'll name acting chief. And yes, I'm mapping out my course of actions. All of these appointments are mine to make, but I met with the chief today. I met with Mark and Bob Osborne today just to kind of talk through some different options that I'm exploring. And I'm sure a lot of the, a lot of the staff members are mapping out things on their white boards in the patrol office as we speak right now. So, but as you said, great department, great group. I'm confident in the next generation of leadership and, you know, happy for Mike and Mark, but it's an opportunity for advancement and growth for, for other individuals in the department. So that's, that's not a bad thing all around. I wanted to pass out some flyers from Kimberly. Jason did mention this, but we have some of the flyers that Kimberly puts together for the Holiday Parade, Small Business Saturday. We have the tree lighting. We have the decorating contest for homes and for businesses. Just some of the work that Kimberly does- and for businesses. Just some of the work that Kimberly does with Katrina and our friends at KKPR in Milford, so keep an eye out for those event flyers. I do have a request, speaking of events. As you may be aware, the St. Patrick's Day Committee is no longer in formation, so the Fire Department in the Town of Newton has graciously and respectfully requested that the mayor and council agree that in 2020, we will have the Newton St. Patrick's Day Parade here in the town, March 21st, 2020, start time 11:00 a.m. This will be the first annual Newton St. Patrick's Day Parade. So I just want to, we have the chief here. I just want to make sure that's okay with the council. Same parameters. We will provide the police and public works like we've done in the past. That is the date they're requesting. I just wanted something formal that you approve, the Fire Department taking over this worthy endeavor, and that that date is okay.
So I had the opportunity to talk to Chief Verkan and Chief, former Chief Miller, and others on Saturday when they were here for Flags of Honor, and they said that they would be coming through with a formal request. And also, we're talking about that this is a collaborative effort, a community effort, that they had already done some homework in talking to some of the businesses and some of the restaurants that have been participatory in the past, having already talked to some of the other towns that have participated, forage groups, fire departments, and others, to see really if interest existed, that if they were to put in the work and effort to host the parade, would people come to it? So I think it's great that the Fire Department sees value in that and the community building that the parade brings to the town, certainly the impact to the businesses, because a lot of people come to it, and that the Fire Department leadership has wanted to step up to do that. So I'm certainly in favor for it. Chief, thanks for all the pre-work that you guys have already done to make sure that you could pull it together and make it happen. But yeah, I'm good with it, but let's go down the line.
Yes.
Who doesn't love a parade? Sandy, you're, Sandy is the parade queen.
Yes, for me, yeah.
I just, I wanted to thank the Fire Department for jumping on this endeavor. I, too, was upset when I saw that they weren't going to be doing it anymore, and wanted to keep it alive. So I'm glad that you guys have done the legwork to get that going. And if I can be of any help in any way, I would love to donate my time to help out, because I saw the value of it, so.
So the 21st, not the 14th, right?
Yeah.
Saturday, the 21st.
14th is tomorrow's town, King Patrick Day Parade.
That's what I was just looking at. Yeah, you don't want to compete with that one.
That'll be the following sentence. All right, so we're good to go, Chief, on that. And obviously, Kimberly will help on the logistics on our end with our award-winning marketing checklist.
Yes.
Chamber of Commerce meet and greet tomorrow, 4:30 to 6:00. Non-alcoholic libations and food will be provided by the town. Come, start here, tour the building, meet the staff, talk about things going on in the town. A lot of fun, so I encourage residents and business owners to please come tomorrow at 4:30. I appreciate the kind words from the mayor. I was able to secure a very generous donation from Alex Cable, once again, $26,000 for Rail Trail Phase 3 towards the trail as well as the bridge that needs to be built. We will obviously thank Alex. We will have proper signage on the bridge and the trail recognizing Alex and his great donation and all the support from Thor Labs. Just for the record, this is the third donation I've secured from Thor Labs this year, $12,000 for the pool transportation, $15,000 for music at our events, $26,000 for the rail trail. That's a total of $53,000. And pool, which Jason was kind enough to work on, to be determined. I'm going to circle back with them once we get the bids in and we award, and then they want me to reach out to them and circle back. So thank you to Alex and Thor Labs, always a great community partner. We're very grateful.
Who said we can't have natural trail walks in a downtown area?
Yeah, it's interesting.
Right? No, it's really cool.
Considering, yeah, it's going through a city, right?
Right.
Back of buildings and parking lots, like, you know, Cory's on top of it.
And that's actually been a generational initiative. I mean, this has been a project a long time in the works, and I remember having a conversation with Alex when he was first looking at those properties, and he said, "I'm going to build these buildings, but I want to make sure that we rehab this trail and that we have this opportunity, this outdoor kind of experience that goes through downtown." So talk about putting his money where his priorities are.
He's been very consistent about that. And then, last but not least, I have a previous commitment on Friday, a day off, so I won't be able to join you for Governor Cody's visit, but we're looking forward to his visit, 1 o'clock. We have staff that'll be here, some members of the public. And, you know, appreciate Councilman Dixon bringing that to our attention. They donated two signs. We ordered another 10. They're upstairs in my office, very large, very bright, but very noticeable, and that's what we want. So they'll be going up at Town Hall, the entrance signs to the town, the parks, the pool, possibly the schools. We've invited Dr. Green. We've invited the 24th District freeholders, who is ever able to join us at 1 o'clock on Friday. And personally, I've dealt with anxiety and depression and thoughts of suicide in the past, so when we can have open conversations about mental health issues, I think it's a good thing. I think more people need to be willing to have those conversations and understand that people are going through challenges in their lives. And I think Governor Cody should be recognized for the work that he's done, because he's really been a champion for mental health issues for many, many years. And I appreciate the work that he's done with that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, and it's interesting, because when you get that recognition, it's like being, you know, like signs that come into town, Tree City USA, you know, all those kinds of things. Yes, it's part of the recognition, but it really is a conversation starter. You know, I work in social and human services, and I was telling the team at JWS about Governor Cody coming up and stigma-free designation, and we had this really robust conversation, all with mental health service providers at work, all MSWs and LCSWs, people that are in the work every day, talking about how long this initiative's been going on, but how you just can't have the conversations enough, whether it's around a mess of violence, it's around mental health, it's around suicide, it's around the opioid issue. You know, it wasn't that long ago, veterans' issues, as I mentioned on Saturday, when my dad came home from Vietnam, he wasn't welcome, he wasn't thanked, he wasn't, you know, there wasn't any services for him. So the fact that now we can talk more comfortably and try to reduce, in the future, eliminate the stigmas associated with all of those issues and more, I think is huge. So it'll be great. Any other reports, comments, or updates at this point? I know we have another portion at the end. All right, let's move on to ordinances. Very proud of this ordinance. We have public hearing and second reading for an ordinance 2019-11. This is an ordinance revising Sections 20-3. B and 3-50. C2 of the Code of the Town of Newton regarding LoSAP contributions. Do I have a motion to open this hearing to the public?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn, and a second by Councilman Schaffler to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward to talk about this ordinance? Please step forward.
Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll offer a motion to close that portion of the hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn, and a second by Councilman Dixon to close the hearing. Before we act, I just want to make mention, it's been a number of years since we've taken a look at the LoSAP payments. So this is just another means for us as a community to recognize our first responders in a very small way for the work that they do. So with that, I need a motion to act.
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance 2019-11.
And I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Dixon, and a second by Councilman Schaffler. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Please.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schaffler?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois.
Yes. We'll move on to ordinance 2019-12. This is a fully funded water and sewer capital improvement ordinance in the amount of $40,000 for acquisition of the water sewer utility truck in the Town of Newton, County of Sussex, New Jersey. So I need a motion to open the hearing.
Make a motion to open the hearing to the public?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Dixon, I was writing Dan and writing Dixon, and a second by Councilman Schaffler. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come forward to speak on this ordinance? Okay.
Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll offer a motion to close that portion of the hearing. Second.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn, and a second by Councilman Dixon to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to act.
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance 2019-12.
I will second the motion to act.
I have a motion to act on ordinance 2019-12 by Councilwoman Diglio, and a second by Councilman Schaffler. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schaffler?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois.
Yes. Ordinance 2019-13. This is an ordinance appropriating $50,000 from the capital fund balance for the 2011 recreational trail grant program project in and by the Town of Newton in the County of Sussex, New Jersey. We just spoke about the offsetting donation to this ordinance. I need a motion to open the hearing to the public.
I'll make the motion to open the hearing to the public.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, and a second by Councilman Dixon. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak about this ordinance? Okay. Seeing none?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Dixon, and a second by Councilwoman Diglio to close the hearing to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to act, please.
I'll make a motion to act on 2019-13. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to act on ordinance 2019-13 by Councilman Dixon, and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schaffler?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois.
Yes. All right, that's it for ordinances. We don't have any old business. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And before I do that, I am so sorry. I wanted to introduce Monica, who's here joining us tonight. I know that she came at our prior meeting just to say hello when she was first coming on, but Monica, welcome to a council meeting in your full capacity as CFO. I understand that you're doing a fantastic job, and I've already identified a couple of areas, but I wanted to welcome you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Town Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tom, could you go through the consent, please?
Sure. 221, 222 relate to the CCI Foundation project. One is for the disbursement of the $60,000 from the Housing Trust. The other is negotiation that I undertook for the pilot year one, estimating about $3,846, which actually exceeds what they were paying to the town in the municipal portion of taxes a few years ago, so that worked out well. 223 is time of year, salt and snow grit for the DPW. 224, contract for suburban for the community pool renovations. As I know Helen knows the mayor about the domestic violence policy, it's new state law, so every town has to adopt the domestic violence policy and designate the town HROs. So Gen Dodd will be the primary, and I will be the secondary HRO for issues relating to domestic violence. 226, transfers, and 227's bills and vouchers.
So just to speak to Resolution 225-2019 for a moment, domestic violence victims are a protected class as it relates to human resource policies. So time off, benefits, all those types of things, the state provides, and FMLA is a little more ambiguous at the federal level, but the state provides for human resource policies and support programs in support of victims of domestic violence. So that's what that speaks to. And that's, as Tom mentioned, something that comes from the state that we've been advocating on so many levels for so many years. I go down to Trenton and testify on a pretty often basis on many things, and this happens to be one of those. So thank you for the resolution to support that. Any other questions, comments, thoughts, anything needs to be taken, any additional conversation?
I need to recuse from check 42304.
42304.
And then, just as a...
And that's from Resolution 227, 2019, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, bills and vouchers, okay.
Yeah, and then, just a clarification point on 22, 222, the pilot, that's money we would not otherwise receive because they're a nonprofit unless we worked that agreement out.
We weren't entitled to anything.
Right, we weren't entitled to anything, so we worked that agreement out. So we're getting something rather than coming completely off the rules, just for...
No, that's good.
All the clarification point, I just wanted that.
Well, we're on the subject of that, the Housing Trust Fund, so it's robust enough to, this is a...
You had already, yeah, oh, yes, and you had already authorized the $60,000. This resolution deals with the timing of the payment in terms of construction and when the state of New Jersey would allow them to proceed. So, yeah, we had already authorized the $60,000, but yes, we do have the funds. We did have the funds when you originally approved the other resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, so Councilman Dixon, that's a good point of clarification, that this was a property that was sold to a nonprofit. We don't have any control and influence on that. It would have been a property that would have been taken off through the tax rules, but through Tom's negotiations and arranging for a pilot, we are going to be receiving proceeds, right? You know, monies in payment in lieu of taxes. So I think there's a negative connotation that the municipalities lose out, or that there's something in favor of the new business development or nonprofit when there's a pilot in place, and this is a great example. They're usually not, by the way, but this is a great example where, you know, really, we wouldn't have gotten anything, but by way of negotiation, we are. So that helps everyone when that happens. Any other comments or questions or thoughts on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn on the consent agenda, understanding from Resolution 227-2019 that Councilman Dixon is recusing from check 42304. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes, accept the recusal on 42304.
Noted. Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schaffler?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois.
Yes. Mr. Russo, do we have any other items for discussion tonight?
Just the item you have in executive, nothing else.
Yes, okay. No other items for discussion from the council, then we'll move on to public. Again, as we stated before, opportunity for public to make any comments, any comments at this time? Nope. All right. So any further council or manager comments?
I only have one on the Holiday Parade.
Okay.
Just reminding everyone that it's November 30th, and I know that I've been working on the parade with getting quite a few signups, and I have secured Santa Claus. He will be there. And I want to thank Kimberly...
On the fire truck?
On the fire truck.
Ladder truck?
Uh-huh.
Okay. That's my favorite truck.
And I want to thank Kimberly for, her and I have been working on the Small Business Saturday for the events that are taking place after that, after the parade.
Good. Anything else? Okay, let me just check one thing really quick. Okay. Yeah, okay. All right, so no other council or manager comments. We will move into executive session. We have a work session tonight. This is Resolution 228-2019. This is a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12, Item 1, personnel regarding the town manager's annual review. Do I have a motion to go into executive?
I'll make a motion to go into the executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schaffler?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois.
Yes, and although our resolutions provide for the language, I will say for Mr. Scruton from the Herald, no action will be taken after that.